First thing, can you give the roll call, please?
Okay, Richard Seiler.
Present.
Joe Mann.
Present.
Dale Robbins. Boy, he's excused.
Yeah, Dale, it's not your turn.
DG Garcia, present. Jim Bondicard.
Here.
And Charlie James.
Here.
And Kimball Bigworsen.
Does he come up on the...
I do not see him.
I do not see him.
I do not see.
Okay, so Commissioner Robbins had notified us of his... He's not in state tonight, and so he's going to be absent. I don't have anything from Commissioner Bigworsen. To move to excuse Commissioner Robbins.
I'm moved to excuse Commissioner Robbins.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move.
And just for the record, um, you have a form.
So on the agenda, we're just gonna look at the minutes from August 9th, and then we'll move into our public hearing for annual common plan code amendments. And we'll start out with the older district, uh, one that will be the big one tonight probably, and then move on to the River District and the Signage Stingers also. But it's not the district, it's the whole city, but done by the Supreme Court. Then we'll have landscape regulations to look at for the River District amendments. And then we'll look at some, uh, code for the community event permitting requirements, City Development Code, those are done by the city. City Development Code for fencing standards for public facilities and utilities. And then the final ones would be the amendment to allow the public utility distribution facilities as a limited use in all zones. And then we'll have citizens' comments, but I'll back up a little bit. We'll do citizens' comments with each of the public hearing items too. So we'll do the... We'll open it up during each of those six items as we get to... I may start out first. I may just go through our public hearing procedures. We have quite a good folks here tonight, sorry, I just want to make it clear to everybody. Well, excuse me, I should... We should go through by order. Let me first do the August 9th minutes. Commissioners, do any of you have any comments to the August 9th minutes?
Who's your first?
Second.
All in favor of bringing the August 9th minutes is written? Say aye.
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 Aye. Move. Okay, so that's the present minutes. Now that means those are the, like, commission hearing procedures, so I follow our agenda here. The chair, which is myself, will open the hearing, which I've already done. The chair will read the hearing procedures for the benefit of the commission. The applicant and the public. Remind members of the audience that if you wish to testify or fill out the form, we do have some forms up here already, so you'll be called upon if you have it, have filled out the form. If you have not, I ask that you do fill out the form. And make sure you put your name, address, and phone number, and indicate whether you're in favor of the proposal for our vote. Staff will present an overview of the application and the staff report. The application presents... The applicant will present the application. And the chair offers the public the opportunity to testify. The chair will limit, and we will limit, our testimony to not more than three minutes per person. Amy is going to be doing the timing, and she will also give you a 30-second heads-up. You might add the two-and-a-half minute mark, a 30-second left heads-up for you. Those wishing to testify are called. Speakers must come up to the podium, state the name, address for the record. I do ask that you speak into that microphone so that all our recording devices and everybody in the room can hear what you have to say. And then the commissioners may ask questions from what you talk about. And then, no clapping, only kissing. We want to keep this a procedural meeting, and if it doesn't, we'll stop and get it back to a procedural meeting. The applicant will be given the opportunity to offer any rebuttal from any public testimony deterred. Another reclamation may be introduced at this time, except in response to a testimony given. I'll ask for additional comments from city staff. We'll close the public hearing for deliberations and continue the hearing to a date. We'll close the public hearing for deliberations, or we'll continue it. So there's someone here we may... I expect to get each of these done as a comm. I won't... I don't expect to delay and continue for another, to span more than one meeting on any of these topics. There are deliberations. The chair asked for motion from the commission. Once a motion is seconded and made, the commission will deliberate on the application, and then we'll meet, determine whether or not we'll need it for approval criteria. And our choices are, we can approve it for a recommendation of the council for approval. We can approve it for a recommendation to the council as edit, or with corrections or whatever we choose to write in it, but we have to do that in a meeting and make it clear what we are foring, or we can deny it being recommended to the council. The chair will require if there's any further discussion with the commission or any final comments from our staff. And we'll vote on the motion, and the vote will be repeated until the motion passes or goes the direction of those three choices that I just did. And then, you know, the secretary will prepare the findings, conclusions, recommendations based on the commissioners' deliberations for education at the next planning commission meeting. And that's... And there's also, and I'll let me sit back on that, but there's more hiddenness to the city council than just procedures tonight.
Yes, so thank you, Chair. One of the things that I did want to just explain procedurally, we're gonna give an overview of the procedural aspects that apply to all six of these hearings. We've been discussed under the same timeframe and whatnot. Those are important facts for the planning commission to be able to deliberate on. So that's important. I'm gonna do it once. We are going to take each of these cases separately, go through the testimony process that the chairman has just laid out for you, and go through to deliberations, and then we'll take on the next case. So each one, while there is one hearing, it's six separate cases, and so we'll do our... We'll go through that process one at a time. And we'll talk about procedure a little bit. It is possible that if we're bumping up on a 6 o'clock hour, the first hearing we must get through at this date because of the timing for the hearing examiner's hearing, which will be coming up. The others do not require that hearing, and so the additional cases, however far we get, we can continue the hearing to a date definite, and that will be a super planning commission to determine what that date definite is. So with that, I'm gonna move into my staff presentation for the River District Open Space Zone Amendment. So I'm gonna figure it out. So the procedural summary that applies to all six of these cases. The planning commission approved the docket that included these six cases in May, May 10th to be exact. We had numerous workshops through the course of the spring and summer. Secret notices and the public hearing notices for the planning commission hearing went out on August 10th and 11th. 11th, it was actually published in the paper. The CEPA comment and appeal period ended on August 24th, and so that decision was final. And it was... The decision was a determination of non-significance and adopting previously adopted environmental documents associated with the comprehensive plan and the River District specific area plan. Our planning commission hearing is tonight. It may be continued, as I said, for possibly some of the cases that are later on the agenda. And in October, the planning commission will have to ratify their findings, so there's a written record that they have to approve. That will go on to the hearing examiner. We have scheduled the hearing before the hearing examiner for the zone change. That is the only piece of this packet that goes before the hearing examiner, and that's scheduled for November 2nd. And we must get the written decision back from the hearing examiner before we can schedule a public hearing before city council. City council does have the final decision-making power, and it is done through ordinance. So we'll have a hearing, and then there'll be a first read and a second read on the ordinance before anything is adopted. So it will likely be in January before we get to a final decision on the case. So based upon the proceedings that we've gone through, we have had an extensive opportunity for public comments as in the evidence by exhibit... Exhibit E, which are all the many comments that we got on the district's open space zone. And we are recommending findings, the planning commission, that the required super review has been completed on the proposed amendment. It has. All public agency, public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished from the time of the examiner. They were. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation, and the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify in public during the planning mission. So those are recommended findings that the planning commission will have to go down on deliberations for each of these. And again, it's part of the procedural requirements for all of these. Also, for all six cases, the criteria for approval for comprehensive plan and development code amendments is laid out in the City Development Code. And it's specifically... This criteria for approval includes such amendment is consistently comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. Changes... A change in economic technological or land use conditions that could warrant the modification. It is found that an amendment is necessary to correct an error. It is found that an amendment is necessary to clarify maybe more intent. It is found that an amendment is necessary to provide for abuse or uses that were not previously addressed. Or, and so it's any one of these can be a basis for this. Or these amendments, as these amendments are deemed necessary by a city council as being in public interest. So that's... So those are the criteria which the planning commission will be basing their recommendation to city council and to the hearing examiner. So first, the River District Open Space Zone change. I did want to point out that... In first, there are three properties within the RDR zone that are proposed to be zone as River District Open Space. They include Cashman Park, which is 2.82 acres. And the area that was identified as the greenway in the River District specific area plan, and that is currently being referred to as the community farm, is 3.94 acres. It consists of three separate tracts. And River Rock Park, which is 4.92 acres. All of these properties are subservient tracts, identified as parks, greenways, or common open space in the River District, SAP, and dedicated to the River Crossing Owners Association for ownership and maintenance in their respective flats. And then, there is one parcel...
I have to be testifying? No, I can't. I can't.
For speaking, please view your microphone. Then there is one parcel that's also in the RDM zone. It's the Future Centennial Trailhead Park, and it's about 9,600 square feet. It's proposed to be planned as lot two of block one, as part of River District County Center third edition final flat, which is currently in review. So as the flat yet early is proposed, flash that. And I'm not going to read through all of the relevant common plan goals and policies because there's quite a few. They are contained on, I think, just 729 of the staff report. So there's quite a few of them. But we will circle back on ones that may be potentially in conflict with this proposal. Okay. So in terms of public comments in the staff report, prior to writing the staff report, we received a total of 22 public comments. Twenty of the comments were in opposition with commonly cited concerns including noise and odor from the farm operation, unsightly views of storage containers and farm equipment, lack of screening and buffering from adjacent residential uses. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we received 22 comments prior to the writing of the staff reports. Twenty of the comments were in opposition, and commonly cited concerns were noise and odor from the farm operation, unsightly views of storage containers and farm equipment, lack of screening and buffering from adjacent residential uses, lack of engagement of neighboring properties and HLA numbers prior to the development of the farm on this property, and general incompatibility of an active commercial farm adjacent to residential problems. One comment did request additional information. The other was a response to comments from the applicant. So since that time, staff has received four additional written comments. One from Renee DeFranzo on September 7th, one from Ms. Sheehan on September 9th, one from Jay Evans on September 10th, and one from Robin Beckbell on September 11th. The copies of those have been provided to the planning commission, and I would like to enter the paper copies into the record as exhibit F. And Kathy or clerk goes to have a copy of that. So, in terms of the staff analysis, proposed uses included in the zoning rights are generally uses that are already allowed under the existing zoning, community events, seasonal and special events, mobile sales and concessions, food trucks, small-scale orchards, vineyards, and community farms. And I want to point out that under the provisions for use determinations in zoning matrix, the concept of a cooperative community farm on less than five acres has been interpreted as equivalent of the small-scale orchards, vineyards, and the community gardens identified in the limited use standard for agriculture actively farmed. While the terminology small-scale orchards, vineyards, and community gardens are not defined in the River District SAP, Washington State Department of Agriculture defines small-scale agriculture as farms of less than 10 acres. Again, main uses... The main differences in uses that are allowed, and we want to point out, is that agricultural product craft sales stands and farmers market would not be allowed on properties currently in the zone, RDR. Community garden farms, vans, and market gardens would be outright allowed uses with proposed definitions to be added in the District Development Code 101C. So that's the main difference. The one thing that I would point out is that given that the majority of the uses are already permitted in the zones that exist today, it's not apparent to staff why a zone change is even necessary. It could simply be accomplished through amendment to the development regulations.
The air conditioner was too loud back here, so we're not able to hear.
Okay. So let me say that again. Based upon the fact that most of these, with a few exceptions, most of these uses are already permitted in the existing zones, it's not clear to staff why creating a new zone and changing the zoning for these properties is even necessary when it could be accomplished in a much simpler fashion by proposing just simply amendments to the regulations. So I do want to point that out. Again, differences in the proposed development code that has been... That is associated with this RDO zone identifies primary use structures in the zone to include picnic shelters, restrooms, playground equipment, water features, vegetable garden beds, farm stands, produce booth, cleaning buildings, shipping containers, expressly identified as an acceptable primary structure. Now, you should note that all the River District expressly prohibits shipping in storage containers and some accessory structure now under the current code. So that's probably the biggest change in this. What's interesting about all the other uses that are identified as primary uses, they're all allowed uses. There is nothing that would be prohibited. They're all the types of uses that you typically see on common open space in main parks. So again, the need for this is hard to discern. So again, continuing in terms of differences in the proposed development code, it does increase the side yard setback from 0 to 10 feet and the rear yard setback from 5 to 10 feet. It does change maximum lot coverage from 30% down to 10%. It also adds design standards that include buffering and screening requirements for metal shipping containers and residential uses. Specifically, containers shall not be closer than 50 feet from a public right-of-way with a sighted steering fence not less than six feet or evergreen landscape buffer not less than six feet high. The permanent evergreen landscape buffer of not less than eight feet in height shall be required along the entire length of the building, the elevation facing the RDR zone, and shall be located within 10 feet of the building, and screening of the non-access entry side of the container may be required to meet this standard. So again, I think that it is important to note that there are several comprehensive plan goals and policies that potentially are in conflict with this proposed amendment. The first is the urban design goal one, which says to maintain the urban village character and the scene resources of the community. The second one is housing goal one, which is preserving the character of existing neighborhoods and supporting high-quality new development. The third is land use policy one, encouraging developers to work with neighborhoods to develop plans that address neighborhood concerns such as environmental protection, aesthetics, quality of life, property development and preservation of open space. Land use policy four, to provide for a compatible mix of housing and commercial uses in all commercial districts, neighborhood centers, community centers, and the central business district. Urban design policy one, maintaining design standards in the design review process to ensure that the neighborhood and community centers are developed with minimal impact on surrounding land uses, are consistent with community character, and assure pedestrian and vehicular access. Also, urban design policy number 19, which is... Which specifically has some standards to maintain, design standards and land uses for neighborhood centers, community centers, and the central business district that are based on the following principles. The one that's specifically in conflict is that unsightly use such as heavy machinery, storage areas, loading docks, and parking areas should be screened from the view of adjacent uses and from arterials. Also, urban design policy 20, maintain specific regulations for designated aesthetic corridors and boulevards that provide specific... Or provide performance standards to adequately screen heavier manufacturing industrial-type developments that have exterior clutter, exterior storage, exterior heavy equipment, exterior fabrication and assembly. I would point out that this policy specifically applies to designated aesthetic corridors and boulevards, and I would posit that a greenway would fall within that category, and then the properties that the community farm is located on were identified in the River District SAP as a greenway. And then lastly... Lastly, I just want to point out that the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate if a change in economic logic or land use conditions occur to form a proposed amendment, if the proposed amendment will be compatible with adjacent land uses, or if the proposed mitigations are sufficient to make the proposed amendments compatible with the surrounding land uses, that the proposed amendment is not detrimental to the public good, and/or that the proposed amendment is in the public interest. So with that, unless the commissioners have any questions for me, the applicant has an opportunity to testify this time. So just pause for a second. Did you have any questions for the MSF report? Very good. Mr. Frank, were you planning on testifying via Zoom or...
Yes, I... Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I... As long as you can all hear me, I'm assuming. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today and present this application for zone change. I think it's regrettable, really, that both the staff and the general public honestly don't understand what the nature of this application is. And so I'd like to just try to provide some clarification. And if you don't mind, I've got a PowerPoint presentation. So would that be put up, please?
There we go. Can you see that?
I'm sorry. Lisa, are you gonna put up the PowerPoint presentation, please?
Your mic's not on, Lisa.
I'm sorry. I thought I did. Hold on one second. Let me try the share screen again. Hold on. It is off. I have to get into slideshow mode. Can you see it now?
Yes, and if, if I, if I can just provide my testimony and I would tell you when to go to the next slide.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So this, this slide shows the River District. It's a project of several hundred acres. It's being developed on between the Spokane River and, and the I ninety freeway. And the River District is a project that we started more than ten years ago. Between two thousand and five and two thousand and seven, we got our initial approvals. Before the city of Liberty Lake was formed, this project actually began, some elements of it. We had an SAP approved. And that sets the development standards for this community. One of the things that's been real critical and is that we're trying to develop a community, we're, we're trying not to just sell houses. And we're trying to develop a project that creates a sense of community that we often have people tell us that we're not building houses, we're building communities and neighborhoods. And so that's, that's the essence of what this zone change is about. Open space and common areas, trails, and providing gathering places for people to get to know each other, where people can work together, learn together, play together, and enjoy entertainment together are critical to the development of this community and very critical to the SAP that was formed initially. When we, when the SAP was approved initially, we didn't create an open space zone. We only created two residential zones, a residential zone, excuse me, a mixed use zone and a commercial zone. The city of Liberty Lake has an open space zone. And in that open space zone, they play some of their parks in open spaces. And the purpose of that zone is to give additional protection so that we know that those open space and park areas will remain in public ownership or common ownership accessible to the public for years to come. So the circumstances as this project is built out, as the community has grown, as the size and range of, of common areas has increased, we believe it's time to create an open space zone. So that's the essence of what this application is. It is creating an open space zone for the common area parcels that have been identified in the application that are owned by the homeowners association and will be made available for public use. And, and our hope is permanently. Those, those areas that have been identified in this application currently have either residential or mixed use zoning on them. So we believe that by creating this zone, we create an environment where there's additional protection provided to those, provided to those open space areas. So if you can go to the next slide, please. That the reasons that we believe this residential RD River District O, open space zone is important are, I, I've outlined them here. These parks and open spaces are key to the, are key components to the River District's mission and we want to make sure that they're preserved in perpetuity. The city has an open space zone and we believe that River District having an open space zone will provide consistency with the open space zone that the city currently has. We believe that, as I've mentioned, this zone will provide more long-term protection to those open space areas because the association currently has the ability to, to sell those properties or use them for other purposes if they choose. And those other purposes, the zoning of that land allows a wide range of other uses in, in the, in the current zoning. So we believe that the separate zone provides some clarity and limits the uses that can occur in those zones. As part of the zone, we've included development regulations. Those development regulations in almost every case except one create a more restrictive development environment. So the setbacks, for example, and you saw in the presentation from the planning director, the setbacks are increased. The site coverage area is decreased. And we've provided some additional screening requirements that are not in the current development regulations of the R, of the residential or the mixed use zone. The one thing that this is about, the one thing that's raised concerns with the, those people that are living adjacent to the property and apparently the one thing that's raised some concerns with the staff is, is our request to permit a shipping container set in place structure on these, on these open space areas. This is something that we've done in other common areas. For example, in Kendall Yards, we have a set in place shipping container structure that holds equipment. It holds, it holds tables, chairs and sound equipment that are used in the Nest Plaza. In this case, we have shipping containers that are located on the community farm property and those shipping containers are used to help wash and clean the produce from the farm and provide some cold storage. That's what those shipping containers are used for. The, all of the other uses that are happening on this property today, all of the other structures are all permitted. So this isn't, this zone change isn't about whether a farm is going to be located here. It's not about whether we can grow produce. It's not about whether that produce can be picked up by people in the community. It's only about can those structures that we have located on there that are shipping containers, are those going to be permitted or not? And I told you at our first hearing that that's a decision that I'm comfortable with the plan and commission making. You have a choice to agree with us that they should be permitted. You have a choice about whether the screening standards that we've provided in the development regulations are adequate or not. And, and if you choose not to permit those buildings or permit them with those screening standards, then we'll use a different type of structure. That, that's all that that means. But to say that this jo, zone change is not consistent with the comp plan and, and into outlining all of the things that the staff did in terms of comp plan provisions that we don't meet is, is not correct. And it's a misunderstanding of the basic nature of what this application is about. If you could go to the next slide, please. These are the areas that we're asking be zoned to open space. There's four of them identified right now. And over time, as additional open spaces or park areas are added to the community, we would hope to come in and add those to the open space zone. The next slide, please. Most of the concern that's been raised by the neighbors has been in relationship to the community garden and farm. I want you to know that the farm has been there for three years. It is a permitted use in the existing zones. It's on land that's owned by, under leased by the homeowners association. The, the RDO zone will continue to permit what's there today. Nothing will change. The greenhouse is going to stay there. It's a permitted building. The gardens are going to stay there. They're permitted uses. The orchard and the farm stand building are all existing permitted uses and permitting buildings. Nothing is going to change. This is planned as a community amenity. This isn't, this isn't anything more than our attempt to provide an opportunity for the people in the community that share an interest in gardening, that appreciate the ability to have access to local farm produce and support our mission to support local agriculture. It allows them to share that interest. It allows them to share and work on the farm. It allows them to share in educational classes that are occurring on the farm. It allows them access to produce from the farm. We have over three hundred members on the farm. We have dozens of people each week that come to the farm to pick up their produce. And, and we have many people who are purchasing a weekly farm box from the, of produce that comes from the farm. The farm provides opportunity for volunteering, for learning about gardening, for access to locally grown and sustainable food. That is the purpose of the farm and it is permitted by the existing zones and would be permitted under the RDO zone. The only thing, the only thing that would change is what type of structure will be used for washing the produce and providing cold storage to the produce. That's the only thing that will change. And we are comfortable with the plan commission and the city council making a decision about what kind of structure that should be. I want to be clear about this, that this farm and the other open spaces that we're building in the community are very important to the mission of Greenstone and the vision that we have for the River District project. So it's, and, and I also want to say that I understand that there are neighbors that feel burdened by the activities that are happening on this property and with the garden and the farm. They feel burdened by it. But I want to also make you aware, and I'm sure you are, that there are people and families around every park and open space that we've developed that feel burdened by it in one way or another. When we first started Pavilion Park, before the city was even formed, there were people that were complaining, the people that lived across the street didn't like the idea that there was concerts in the park. They didn't like the idea that there was noise going into the night when we had, when we had movies, we were showing movies. They didn't like the idea that people that were using the park were parking in front of their property. They felt burdened by that open space. The same thing has happened with many of the trails we've developed because many people feel threatened by trails. They feel like the trails give too much proximity to their home. They allow people to look into their backyard. They look, allow people to look onto their patio. And it concerns them and the security. They feel somewhat insecure when they're near a trail. This is not unusual, that there are people that are going to feel that they carry an extra burden when they're located adjacent to common areas that are being developed. But I will say that the mission of the plan commission and the mission of the city council and our mission as a developer is to work in the common interest, to work for the benefit of the community. And, and, and there are times when working for the benefit of the community may place an additional burden on an individual property or person. And I think that's part of the price we pay for living in a community. Living in a community where we have shared responsibilities and we have shared access to properties that we all want to use and benefit from. So please understand that what we're trying to do here is protect open space with this zone change. We are willing to abide by the decision that the plan commission makes about the kind of structures that we're going to build. But this isn't about anything other than that. This isn't about whether this farm is going to be here or not or what kind of uses are going to be on the common areas. Because as, as the staff has said, all the uses that we've listed, they're all already permitted. Why are we not doing this under existing zoning? Because we want to provide additional protection that would come from a separate open space zone. That's why we're doing it and that's why the city has an open space zone themselves. If you could go to the next slide, please. These are pictures of, these are pictures of the farm. This is a greenhouse and the planting beds in front. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the farm taken from Indiana Street. So this is taken from the sidewalk in Indiana. You can see the shipping container behind the six foot fence there. You can see a foot or two of the container sticking over the fence. The building on the right-hand side is the, is the permitted greenhouse. It's very difficult for me to look at this picture and say that in, that somehow that shipping container is more intrusive than the greenhouse itself is. And so I think there's a need to kind of keep this in perspective and I think this photograph helps understand the perspective of what's happening here. Next slide, please. This is a, this is a picture of the shipping container that is the one that's used for a cold storage of the produce. And this is taken from the fence line on the east side, looking, on the west side, looking east. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the shipping container taken from approximately the trail looking west and you can see the containers and then you can see the, the fence and the houses in the background. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the, of the farm from, from the trail looking from north to south. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the orchard and the B boxes that are located within the, the bounds of the orchard. So next slide, please. I think that, you know, there's this question of the compatibility of the farm use with the adjacent uses. As I've said, none of the, nothing that you've seen in those pictures, except for the shipping containers, nothing that you've seen in those pictures is going to change. They're all permitted under the existing zoning. The storage containers, we believe, have limited visibility from the street. The fence really screens them quite a bit from the street. From the residential units to the west, you can see the top portion of the shipping containers over the fence. And we're proposing development regulations that will provide full evergreen screening, eight feet high around, around those containers so they can't be seen from adjacent residential zones. And the development regulations also increase setbacks, reduce site coverage standards and limit the kinds of uses that could be used in the zone. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, there's a balancing of interests that has to take place anytime that you're making a judgment on a zone change or a judgment on a project that's being sent before you. And the balances and benefits of the community have to be balanced with the perceived negative impacts that come from adjacent properties. And we're asking you to make that judgment related to the shipping containers. You make a decision about whether the screening that we provided is adequate or not. If you feel it's not inadequate protection, then we'll build a more permanent building at that location instead. And so that decision, we're happy to, to leave to the planning commission, the city council, but there's a balancing of interest that has to take place there. Next slide, please. But there's a balancing of interest that has to take place there. Next slide, please. This is more than about this, that's this farm and, and, and the uh, and the community gardens. This application is about all of these other common areas. And whether these will have an open space zone on them or whether they'll have a residential and mixed use zone on them. So this is Half Moon Park. Currently has a residential zoning. We're asking that this have an open space zoning to it. Next slide, please. This is River Rock Park. We're again, this has a residential zone to it. We're asking that this have an open space zone to it. Next slide, please. This is in the vicinity of where the trailhead park would be. This has not been developed yet, but we have it under design. It, we hope to have this developed within the next twelve months. This park is located near the existing trailhead on Harvard Road. It's currently zoned mixed use. And we ask that this area be zoned resident, be zoned um, open space. It's time, next slide, please. As time goes on, there'll be other open spaces added. And we're going to ask that that open space be applied to other uh, parks that are developed in the future. Uh, next slide, please. The residential, um, the open space has development standards which I've talked about and I won't spend any more time with this, but. These development standards are more restrictive than those in the current residential and mixed use zones. Um, we believe that this proposed amendment, when you understand that it's an open space amendment. And it's, it's, we're planning to have open space designation for this property. It clearly is a benefit inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. We believe that there are changed conditions that warrant the amendment. There's been growth in the community. There's been growth in the open space areas. Um, there's the importance of long-term planning for these open space areas that become more prep, more. Uh, more identifiable and important as the community has grown. The range and scope of open spaces and recreational re- resources that we have are increasing. And, and the range and types of open space and parks we have will also increase. Um, and the pandemic's changed the lifestyle patterns of people and work. People are at home more. And the opportunity for places where people can gather, where they can meet together, learn together and share common activities. Is more important than it's ever been before. Um, is the amendment detrimental to the public good? Again, you have to, you have to understand that this is trying to protect open spaces. They, the shipping container issue is really a separate issue that can be dealt with separately. But you can't lose sight of the fact that what we're trying to do here is protect open space areas with this, with this zone change. Um, is the amendment in the public interest? And again, we're trying to track, protect parks and open space areas. This is not some narrow thing, the way the staff is looking at it and the way that the neighborhood has looked at it. Is this is some narrow tiny issue about shipping containers. It's far more than that. Um, so uh, if you could just uh, go to the last slide, we're just urging. Uh, your approval of the residential office, uh, the residential, uh, the River District Open Space Zone. We believe it's consistent with the River District SAP vision. We're trying to build resilient and strong neighborhoods. They require parks and open spaces. Um, within walking distance of where people live. There's going to be a variety of activities take place in these open spaces and have access to local products and food. Is, is strengthens neighborhoods and an important part of our vision. So anyway, thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm out of town actually, and so I'm not sure how long I'm going to be able to stay there, but. Mike Terrill's uh, in the audience and representing Greenstone and he'll be available to answer any questions you have. If you have something now. I'm happy to answer it, but otherwise Mike will be available to answer your questions.
Let's, let's let the commissioner just ask if they have other questions for us.
The city does.
How did the city come to own Archer Park?
Um, it was, uh, it was dedicated to the city.
I don't, I mean, did the city pay money for it? Was it donated to the city?
No, it was, it, it was donated to the city, I believe, uh, but it was reversible. The value of the land was reversible through Tiffin Lives. The city paid for the, um, development of the park.
All right.
We did pay for the development of the park, but we were also reimbursed under Tiffin Lives.
Okay, so homeowners had nothing to do with Archer Park?
Archer Park is not owned by the homeowners. That is.
Correct. Sold by the city, maintained by the city. All facilities there were paid by the city.
Yes.
Okay, okay. That was all.
Mr. Chair, if you could just ask the audience to have speed when we're trying to listen to all of the deliberations, including their testimony. Because it was a little bit harder for me to concentrate on that when I was hearing other conversations going on.
And it's, that's due to, thank you. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and open up for public, uh, to have any testimony.
Yes, if I may, uh, Chairman Zeller, uh, so I do have a number of people who have signed up to testify. If anyone um, wishes to testify that it is not built out of bone yet, please do fill it out and, you know, Kathy, Kathy, do you have any more?
They're on the table.
Okay, but really, but I have all the ones.
Oh, yes.
Um, with that, um, I'm going to start with the, the people that are here in person and then we will also open it up to the. To the public that is attending by his name. So the first person I listed to speak is Joy Moore. And Joy, um, as you come up to the, to testify, would you please state your address for the record? And then, um, Amy is going to uh, be the timekeeper and she'll give you a thirty second one.
So, um, I'm Joy Moore. I live at two zero one five three Glenbrook Avenue. Um, and I didn't get a chance to write on my thing. I'm opposed to the open area spaces. Um, I, and my reason for being opposed is we live right on the fence row behind. The community garden and two doors down from us, a, the box car was put behind our neighbor's fence. Um, and Mr. Frank, when we confronted him about it initially. He told our neighbors, he threatened them. He said, if you don't want the box car, I'm gonna build something taller than that. Is what they were told by him. Um, and that, one of the reasons that we want the city to have control over this property is. There is an eight foot limit, eight foot height limit. If you give Mr. Frank an open area. The city being in, um, charge of it, how high will that building go with Glenn or neighbor's fence? Um, and there was also, he talks about building community. They complained to him about the noise from the generator. Um, time and time again. And, um. The other, we're opposed to having. And to want music venues there. Why can't we have music venues with asking the city. You know, for a permit so that they are, there's control over it by the city. Um, we were concerned about. Um, having too many cars on the streets and the noise and also there aren't bathrooms at these parks. Is he going to bring in porta potties? Um, you know, the city would have control over something like that. It's not an open area space. Um. And our concern also is that, um. Mr. Frank has lined up his vision for these spaces, but will, will he really do what he said? We don't trust him as people that bought houses from him. He talks about building community. Everyone on our street pays on our fence row, pay twenty-five hundred dollars more for our property. Being told that nothing would be built behind us. And he told us, just like he said on video, well, sometimes you have to take. Take one for the team. Um, that's the price you have to pay. Um, last year we were told that our HOA, that we were being reimbursed for um, water and. Electricity. This year at our HOA meeting, we were told that our HOA is paying for that, for the garden. He just said that we were not. But we haven't heard different. For speakers, thank you. First I listed to speak is Debbie, uh, Debbie.
My address is one nine 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 five East Wonders. How do you think, um, people in this area, they're, they're probably just seeing. How are you going to help them, um, to develop some aspects in that community? And they said, talk about this based on those, there's, um, there's. Uh, my, literally, my mom and dad, they call power lines, power lines, they're usually trying to be doing this. The result of the farm, not only power lines, it's a project that they're already working with, it's very challenging. The new proposal for audio zone is a terminal, it's a strip of workers in one, it's a, it's a, it's a. And these don't need approval, I have concerns over the following changes. Ever since the first, we've got two, three, four, no, four, two, three, four, five, work on it. Thank you for coming along, George, to tell me that not only do you have a vision of everything. These are the four children in the park, or the top on the power line, so, um, um, or any of these fifteen kids. Yeah, not the ones, it's, it's. Well, before, in that, in the original, it's basically more, you know, it's just a valuable, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. The new audio zone as well, or the second thing, the power lines, they're all the same.
That are against the farm in general. That shouldn't cloud the judgment of the planning commission, in my opinion. There's a lot of things that have been said before I, the volume, the speaking went out where I couldn't hear. There are simp, there's a lot of testimony that simply you have to take with a grain of salt because it's been explained to them that it's not true. I have met ten times more people on the trail by the community gardens than have been complaining about the gardens themselves. My wife and I buy plant starch in the spring, and during the season we buy lettuce, tomatoes, peppers, Asian prayers, zucchinis, and cucumbers. There's a very small minority of people that do not represent the feelings of the overall River District community. They bought homes behind transmission power lines, major ones. The farm has improved their property values. It's given us something to look at along the trail other than scab, bushes, and rock. The community farm has brought this community together. I'm looking forward to next year's community garden and more classes. This has done exactly what it's intended to do, and that is to create a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is on the line that wishes to speak? Give it just a second, but seeing none, um, seeing none. We want to so so the applicants have an opportunity to put testimony if, um, he so desires. Um, I do not see Jim still on the line. Mike, did you want to offer any rebuttal?
I don't have any specific rebuttal like. Thank you. I don't have any specific rebuttal. Um, I think Jim's comments and presentations have themselves. I just, if you have questions, I would attempt to answer them. I don't know whether this is the time for that or not.
I, I, I don't, do we have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, or deliberations?
Any additional comments first, yeah?
Well, I would like to respond to Betty's comment regarding how this happened. Um, and I wanted to find the division permission to be clear that the greenhouse, first of all, it is required to do that for it, um, because it was going to be, um, there for longer than six months, which meant that it couldn't be treated as a temporary structure under, um, International Building Code, although Avista considered it to be a temporary structure. Um, however, it is below the square footage that would require a CBR review or any sort of notice. So it was really just an industrial action. That is the reason why it was considered, um, to be accessory to the community gardens, and it was a reasonable use for common open space. Again, from, from, uh, my understanding. Um, and again, you're hearing the, the, uh, reviewing the code. It was consistent with, we felt with, um, uh, the uses that were laid out, which were allowed, including small work and juniors, et cetera. Um, so, so from that perspective, it wasn't allowed use and, and industrial action because it was considered exempt by our, um, by our city development code for noticing purposes.
Can I ask a question?
Um, I, I don't think this is the time to do it because we're focused on the hearing.
Okay, sure.
Respond to the question. I'm happy to talk to you after, after the
Sure, that's fine.
In addition, that's it.
That, that was it.
Thanks, Lisa. So, uh, closing the hearing now for deliberations. For us to have our deliberations, for us to discuss things. With that, Commissioner, any comments, questions?
Yeah.
Or motions to move forward?
I've got, uh, comments. Okay. Um, so I think that the key, there's a lot of things, but based on the staff analysis, and the staff analysis that I read says that everything, with the exception of the storage containers, uh, every activity that is currently underway in those zones are permitted, with the exception of the storage containers.
With the exception of the farm, it, with the exception of the farm, uh, stand, that was one of the uses that was not allowed, but that could be addressed.
So the farm stand is not allowed as of this point in time?
Um, so
I thought, I thought the way I read it was that, talk about that building.
The, the building, that's, that's just, that's a, that's a storage building, is all that it is. What's not allowed is to, is to be, uh, selling, uh, running a farmer's market. It's not allowed to, um, be selling, um, uh, having vendors selling items like in a farmer's market style.
So the farm stand is or is not permitted, uh, under the current zoning?
It, the, the farm stand itself, because it is really just a storage building in a place where people come pick up their, their, um, subscriptions, uh, to the, uh, collage, um, isn't allowed use. It wasn't explicitly
It's allowed use.
It isn't allowed to use.
Now, you know, they are selling to the general public.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, uh, again, farm stand per se is not permitted.
So I'm, I'm confused right now.
Well, thank you, because we're all confused, because what is characterized and then what happens is often two different things.
Okay. So, uh, what I would say, um,
Oh, it's a limited, I'm sorry, it is, it is a limited use. L, limited use, it just has to be, it is, so it is, it is permitted.
It is permitted.
Yeah, our, our matrix shows that it's a limited use.
That's what I thought.
And the farm stand.
Yes.
And that has not changed. That's not part of it.
So let me state it again, then, so that all the activity that's currently taking place, except for those, uh, metal storage containers are permitted.
Yes.
Okay. Now, having said that, um, you know, I, I walked the farm several times. My most recent, uh, review of the farm, I was walking it, uh, Monday afternoon. And, um, you know, I think the challenge there is that, uh, it, it's, uh, in terms of if you want to call it an urban farm, uh, which I kind of like that terminology, uh, I would summarize it by saying that it's, it's a lot more farm than it is urban. In other words, uh, I've seen, uh, farms that are just gorgeous, you know, and you, uh, as a way of comparison, anybody that's, anybody that's been down to Wallo Wallo, you see the, the farms in Wallo Wallo and the taste rooms of the, uh, facilities, they're gorgeous. But then you see other farms where you have rusted machinery out in the front yard. They're not gorgeous. And so when I do the walk around the urban farm, uh, that we have right now, it, it's probably more farm than urban, if you, if you understand what I'm saying. Uh, now, the thing is, is that what we're being asked to do is approve a, a zone change. And, uh, uh, there may be, uh, some very good reasons, uh, to make the, the change to RDO. But, uh, what's happening right now in terms of activity is not going to make any difference whether we change it or not, unless we put in some restrictions with respect to a change to RDO. And, uh, I would say that, uh, I would propose, uh, several restrictions or, let's call it conditions, if you want to change it from where it is today, uh, to an open space. And I made a listing here of some of the conditions, but I would say in advance of that, I, the other thing that I've talked to Lisa about this is those Christmas stuff that's got to get out of there. That is just, uh, for, for me, it's totally unacceptable. It's got to go. Okay? Uh, now, having said that, uh, the yeah, so I think that, uh, with respect to the farm itself, uh, there, if there's certain activities certainly should not be permitted. There's, you don't want to have any poultry there. You don't want to have any sheep there. You don't want to have any livestock or animal husbandry. You don't want that there. Nobody wants that there. Now, having said that, some people mentioned, uh, some people mentioned, uh, food processing. And I'm not, I don't know what the food processing would be, that's permitted activity. I have no idea what that would be. But I was just reading some of the comments. But, uh, not knowing what it is, I would say it should be prohibited. Other prohibited things or conditions upon making this a common area is you don't want to have any tractors or farm machinery out there, except for maybe, okay, grass floors, trimmers, normal landscape equipment. Uh, the next point I had is capital N O, temporary storage containers. And what I, my, my belief, my opinion is that the tool shed, the vegetable cleaning freezer, I'm going to call collectively, storage containers should be moved to a new building that's similar in look to the farm store. And such new buildings should be located to the market adjacent to the existing market store.
Yay.
Now, the thing is, we can't force that. Now, having said that, the other thing that's definitely needed is you need to have some resters, not a damn porta potty. Because that's all I got out of there, is a porta potty. When I was walking around, where am I going to the bathroom? Well, there's a porta potty over by Christmas. A couple of other points, uh, this, there should be no N, capital N capital of autos, trucks on the existing bike path. It's, it's not for, you know, golf cart like vehicles, okay, but you got autos and trucks, no, that should not be there. And so, but that means you have to have, seriously, you have to have appropriate off street parking. And you have to, uh, probably do that with access coming from, or just, uh, I guess it would be east from Indiana Street.
Um, Jim, can I ask you a question on the parking? Is that, uh, the workers or customers or folks?
Customers at everything.
Every park on the bike path?
Yeah, I mean, right now.
I haven't seen that.
Workers are using the bike path. They're driving a bike and they're parking just kind of out in the field someplace.
So are they parking on the path or are they parking in the field?
They're accessing the field with the
Yeah, the path. Who read that? A driveway in the farm?
There's, there's, there is no driveway. There is no way to access the farm other than that path on the bike path. That's how vehicles access the farm.
I, I guess I missed that. I guess I missed that.
Yeah, you, you know, you've got the bike path. Now, to the east, there is a, a curbside where you could access, but it's not paved. It's, it's, you, you, you take the help of your vehicle in your hands if you use that to try to access anything in the, uh, okay. So, um, Ben, I'm sorry. So, uh, other, uh, I would call them conditions or requirements is that, uh, there's got to be a plan to mitigate the noise from the greenhouse. It's, it's noisy. And there, but there's probably, uh, I'm, I'm not an expert on that area, but there's got to be some things that could be done to mitigate the, the noise. It could be based on just times of operation. It could be maybe a, a less noisy farm, uh, damp. I, I'm not the expert there, but there has to be mitigation, because that sucker is loud. And if you cannot come up with an acceptable noise mitigation solution, then move it. Because it, it's noise pollution. If, if shrubbery and trees, whatever, if that would mitigate the sound, that would be interesting, but somebody needs to take a look at that. And then, um, the other point is, uh, you know, I saw, uh, Jim's picture of the farm. When I was looking at the farm the other Monday, it didn't quite look like that. I saw a lot more weeds than other garbage. It needs to be cleaned up, and I'd like to understand what is the plan for the rest of the common area, which is just kind of, you can call it open space, but it looks not good. So I would say let's, you got to keep the farm clean of weeds and trash, and I think we should see what the landscaping plan is going to be for the non-farm areas. And I do believe, right, that urban farm concept could be of value if it's done correctly, if it's done properly, and it shouldn't be a nuisance. It needs to be an attractive asset for the community. And then there, I'll make one final crazy comment. Lisa, this is crazy. So that's why I was asking, how did the city come into control of Archer Park? I was asking that question just to understand that the city does, City of Liberty Lake does own Archer Park. I sense there's a lot of distrust right now within this community about what's going to happen with that, uh, common area. Is it possible for the city to take ownership of that? That, that's just a question. Okay? And so those are my comments.
Well, I have a few as well.
Okay.
Um, I think all those, my original understanding of this farm was it was to be a community farm, where there would be an orchard, people might be able to rent a plot of land if they had too small of a yard, and would be able to grow their own garden and those kind of things. But this has become as a commercial enterprise. Uh, and that is not permitted in any certain stance. The other thing that we seem to be losing sight of is if we do rezone this as open space, that means that Greenstone can now put storage units in Haverhill Park. They can put storage units anywhere they want in those open spaces, uh, and that is not acceptable to me in any way, shape, or form. The last thing is, I served on the Board of Equalization for the county for fifteen years. We heard property tax appeals. One of the things about the open space designation is taxed at one tenth of the normal tax rate. And if, and this open space would fall into that taxation, uh, category, if you will. Uh, and that was never stated as a reason. So I can tell you that, uh, I have heard no compelling evidence to change this zone. None. From the opponent or from anyone that is in favor of it, I see nothing that compels us to make a change.
Thank you. Would you hear any comments?
Yes, I have a few. Not many, but I need you to see I live at two two eight five five, East Country Vista Drive, Unit three sixty-one, here in Liberty Lake. Why do I say that? And it's because we all are introducing ourselves and where we are in relation to this property of concern. Something needs to be done on your behalf of the community who lives in that area. The type of zoning could possibly help you with your further and future decisions. Because where the unknown becomes is when you don't have the zoning and something pops up because the owner of the property makes a decision. You see, all of it is relevant, but not all of it is being talked about. The permitted uses are there. They were there a long time before many of you moved there. The failure comes from places like a planning commission and a city council. And why do I say that? And I'm a planning commissioner. It's because when people move into a community, don't just have a Jeremy Nichols talk to them about what's coming. Have a meeting about what's coming. Every time they're selling a block property, why so you know before you purchase what you may be getting? The after effects are what we see here. It's after it's all done, and then everyone says, I wasn't told. Most often, none of us even ask before we purchase that home we love, our forever home. No one wanted Legacy Ridge. You should have heard the clamor about Legacy Ridge, and it's a beautiful place to live. Certainly no one wanted where I live. And I live in an over three hundred thousand dollar property that is worth its weight in gold for people wanting to come to Liberty Lake, who cannot afford the once three hundred thousand dollar homes that are now in excess of five hundred thousand. Okay? So when we hear Mr. Frank, most often people take Mr. Frank as the enemy. Let, let's just be honest, you know, I'm real, I'm raw, that's why I'm BG, right? We take him as the enemy because all of a sudden we feel threatened by the very man who built the very homes that we all call our forever homes, our beautiful homes in our beautiful communities that we moved in, that we love. Conditions must be met where all of us fit in every conundrum there is. Look at me, people. I'm from communities where we never had a say, and any and everything that could be put in that community under high wires was there, is still there. And people have fought for years what you're fighting for now in your beautiful community. It has a farm, and thank goodness it does, because at one point, we're all going to need it with what's happening. One point, we're going to wish that farmer's market was there because something's going to happen at the store where we used to buy bread for fifty-nine cents. Many of us in this room know that. Now it's three dollars and fifty-nine for two slices of bread. So the key is, is before we argue, and I'm sorry, commissioners, for taking up time, but I'm talking to the people. Before we argue, it's not nice, it's not right. I fought a million dollar home. Before we argue that, let's do one more thing, and that's say to our community, to our commissioners, to our council, let us in on the books when we first move here. Make it a process that when we move here, the next B-line is to the city planning commission to find out, here's where I'm moving, do you know about anything? Who's the declarator? Who's building? Can I talk to them? We don't do that, and then we have this, what I call a mess. It's a mess. None of you want to move, and the zoning is to protect you. You know, we don't know what we don't know, that we don't know, we don't know. But as soon as we find out, we wish we knew, right? So the point is, let's not, let's not think of the future other than how long we're going to live in it. Let's think of the future as, what do I know because someone told me? Ask Mr. Frank. Don't make him the enemy. Ask him. Many of the things I read pointed to him as a person instead of pointing to the object that brings us to this room. I approve of the zone change.
Excuse me, excuse me. Let's go with, uh, focus on what we have in front of us, because
I'm sorry. I approve of the zoning change, but I don't know how I'm going to vote. Because I know that it means you won't be hurt perhaps in the future, unless you leave it for it. I think everything that's been permitted is still there. It's not going to change. We're talking about the structure, I apologize to my commissioners, the structure, let's ask him to move it. Let's ask him to move it. But let's not cut our noses off with spider faces. I'm sorry, I'm a little long-winded. I apologize to all of you. We did, we are running out of time, but I just want you to put that on the plate for consideration.
I do.
Go ahead. Thank you. Focus on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have experience in dealing with and understanding the relationship between residential uses and industrial agriculture. And most times, it doesn't turn out well. Um, I've walked this property. I've talked, I've visited some of the landowners that are adjacent with the property, looked at the, you have the views out of their, your backyard. And my understanding of what is happening there is for all intents and purposes, industrial agriculture. And that takes me to a, to a place where I have to understand, okay, I think the idea of this community, the community garden is, is valid, makes sense. It, I, and I was listening to Mr. Frank talk about some of the reasons why, um, Greenstone did this, decided on this action. It makes sense to me as a planner, as a community developer in the past. I, I admire this approach. I think it makes sense for a number of reasons. One is the idea of establishing open space, whether it's a park or a community garden, creates a place for people together. Now, they made it all together for the same reason, and they may not like the fact that they're participating in, um, what I have termed industrial agriculture. I've heard that term thrown around a couple of times today, this afternoon. I look at what the options are, um, and Mr. Frank talked about, well, it's really about his containers. It's really not about the open space use. That's what most of the who is about. Plain devil's advocate, a couple of questions. This land right today is zoned residential R, correct? I live in Legacy Ridge, and I've watched De'Aro Horton build homes on Legacy Ridge that are immediately adjacent to the same KV towers and lines that transact this parcel we're talking about today. If the land is zoned residential, it's conceivable that Mr. Green, Mr. Frank, Greenstone, could build houses on that piece. Not under the electrical wires, but adjacent to the existing homes that run along that one boundary. And I'm, I'm not sure you would, if you live there and you look at the containers, which are not the most attractive thing, and I'll address that in a second, I'm not sure you would be happy with the bunch of homes being built along that boundary either. I mean, I wouldn't think I would. But it is zoned residential. So that potential possibility is there as an option for Greenstone and Mr. Frank. Where the, the instant subject is a change from residential to open space. I support the idea of going to open space for the reasons I've talked about, a place to gather activities. If you want to have a community garden, I think that's positive for the folks that live in the area, for the kids, if it's used properly. I support the zone change with some provisions, and I was listening to my fellow commissioner talking about some of his ideas, and some of them follow along with what I'm going to say. Number one, the matrix that was provided as a part of the application identified what Greenstone wants as permitted uses. I would say that the matrix needs to delete the reference to a farm stand. It needs to delete the reference to a market garden, because this, this should be a community garden with raised beds for the community, and delete any reference to additional definitions for farm stand and the market garden. All of that's taken out of the matrix. So this rolls back to a community garden, which is what's permitted anyway. So this rolls back to a community garden, which is what's permitted anyway. The city code amendments that are addressed in section ten dash two D are okay, except that there is a specific section that talks about metal shipping containers. That's ten-two-L-seven-C, comma, three. I'm recommending that that section should be amended to read, "Metal shipping containers shall not be permitted in this district." That's the open space district, "Except for temporary construction, storage purposes for a period not to exceed one year from date of permit issuance and subject to the following standards." Those are the standards in that section of the code. Do you follow me, Lisa? Okay. Number three, "All garden activities shall be established and referred to as community garden and practice and implementation." Number four, "Notwithstanding resolution of current existing code violations and associated appeals for parcel two A, all metal containers or other temporary structures shall be removed from the subject parcel prior to issuance of a final plat for plat number PLT-two-zero-eighteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-one or final civil construction plan approval for the subject plat, whichever comes first." In other words, all that stuff goes before they can get those approvals. Number five, "All structures existing and future located within parcel two A, B, or C shall be brought into compliance with requirements of this utilities prior to issuance of a final plat for plat number PLT-twenty-eighteen-dash-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-one or final civil construction plan approval for the subject plat, whichever comes first."
I have to be clear for a second.
Okay.
The plat has already been approved. The plat is...
Is it a final plat?
Long ago.
It's a final plat?
It's actually, it's in several final plats, yes.
They have to submit civil construction plans?
No, because they're already under fire down the open space lot. They have for the plat, the plat's already built out.
This is, by my speaking, though, is the plat that is to the east for residential use.
Oh, okay, all right.
Not not, not the subject parcel, but the plat that's planned to the east. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Because my experience is, the only way you can get people to do things is you need to leverage what they want. They want a final plat. They're gonna want to have civil engineering plans approved so they can build homes. If you want structures moved or redesigned or rebuilt, you can leverage that by condition using that plat.
Is that what we're talking about now?
I think that's beyond my purview. I think it's way beyond where we are. This is a recommended presentation.
I understand, but here's the problem. The problem is that the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat has already been established. And that what you're proposing would be a change of conditions to the preliminary plat, which we don't have the ability to, because the applicant has entitlement to the, to what was proven in preliminary plat. They may not be entitled to do anything more on, depending upon how it's worded in the code amendments, if you are recommending the, uh, for the code amendment. There may be additional items that they have to seek before they can get approval for development on these properties or in this zone.
So you're saying that we cannot tie a condition to this approval that affects that or that?
That's correct, because it's already been existing entitlement.
I don't, to all due respect, I don't agree with that, but, okay. Okay, "The applicant shall submit to the city delivery lane verification from the district utilities of compliance, all requirements, hard to issuance." They gotta do that. They haven't done. "If both conditions apply, we're applicable to parcels two A, B, and C, and three as described in the subject application." So all those residual pieces that are zoned residential, that he wants to make open space, he's got a good one.
So can I suggest, can I just suggest that the way to approach that would be, you could have, you can do conditional zoning. So the zone change could be conditioned on that, and it could be, and it could be a conditional zone used addressed through development agreement.
Okay.
So that, so those terms could be, could be...
In a, in a development agreement?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. One way or the other, you have to condition the parcel and ensure compliance. And that, if it's a development agreement, it's the concept you wanna use, that's fine. But ensuring compliance is more ongoing. And lastly, "The applicant shall submit to the city delivery lane department of planning," that would be you, "a yearly compliance report on the status of all conditions." In other words, here is your list of conditions. If these are important to us, important to the community, we need to know that you're complying. So give us something at the end of the year, after this approval, that tells us where you are in this process. That's what I'm suggesting. I have the wording, if you don't. If I can say it.
Yes, yes, I'd like that the, that, I'd like you to include it as an exhibit, so that I... So that we can get the wording in there. Okay, thank you. So that would be a requirement of every applicant that comes forward with this such thing. It wouldn't just be a requirement on this one applicant. It would be a process that would be used for everyone, and not singling out this...
Well, so, so...
That's my question.
Well, I guess it depends on how it's structured. What I heard was trying to tie it to a plat. And I don't think that we can do that if it was conditional zoning. If the recommendation was that it would require a development agreement. Now, those development agreements run with the land, but it would be tied to the specific properties that are being new zoned. And I wanna make the point, I also wanna make the point that these properties are owned by River District, the Homes Association.
Right. Ask a question.
Thank you.
They haven't applied for building permit on those parcels yet, but they have a preliminary plat.
They haven't applied for a building permit on the parcels to the east?
Yes.
They have one building permit, and that is for the farm, the, the, what do they call it?
For a residential structure in the preliminary plat?
Yeah, no, they have no residential structure.
Could you tie compliance to the issues of that building permit or residential structure?
So respectfully, respectfully, that property to the east is not the subject of this hearing. There's, we have legal descriptions for... I'm sorry, that property to the east is not the subject of this hearing. The, the subject of the hearing is the reselling of specifically described parcel tracks that, that we have specific legal descriptions. So to try and impose conditions on properties that are outside of the purview of this action will be very challenging, if that makes sense. Again, you could require a development agreement, or recommend a development agreement, a, a, a conditional zoning that would address the concerns that you're talking about. And that would be accomplished through a development agreement that would run with the land.
Okay, well then, what I would do is I'll modify my recommendations to include that clause. That a development agreement is used to structure compliance.
I'm sorry, what?
I wanted to respond just very briefly.
No, we're up against a clock right now. We can extend this meeting, right? But I need a motion to do that.
Well, I, I...
And the commissioners would have to agree to extend the meeting.
I think we should be extended for, um, ten minutes.
One hour.
Well, we have to, we have, we have only deliberations tonight.
Let's, let's do one hour, if I could. I'm just, I'm giving you...
It doesn't have to be an hour, does it?
No, because we can leave early, but I don't wanna do this motion every ten minutes.
Gotcha.
I'll favor extending it until seven o'clock. Okay, so we're gonna extend our meeting until seven right now. That's a one hour additional meeting. Okay, now, if you'd like to go.
Thank you so much. The activity, some folks have characterized it as industrial agriculture. It is not industrial agriculture. By definition, it's not industrial agriculture. By size, it's not, there's nothing about, it's not industrial agriculture. If you have row crops, and if you have farm machinery, then you might be thinking about industrial agriculture, but that's not what they've got there. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is that, uh, to be clear, is that the activities that they're doing today, including retail sales from the farm stand, are all permitted activities?
Yes.
Okay. So then, um, the question in front of the board is, do we recommend changing from River District residential or River District next use, changing it to open space? And with the definition of open space? And I guess, I have to say that, um, I think you could support, or I could support it, if the restrictions that I articulated were put in place with respect to that open space. But if you can't put in those restrictions, then I would not be in favor of changing. Now, having said that, then it doesn't change the existing situation.
May I, may I just clarify?
I know, I wasn't, okay, I mean, you gotta have a little bit.
Okay, so, no, so I just wanna make the point that there, there's almost two separate questions here. There's one case, but there's two separate questions that you have to insert. One is, are, are you going to recommend the comprehensive plan amendment and civil land use and zone, and then the zone change?
Condition.
And then number two, and again, you can condition or amend it. And then number two, are you going to recommend the district regulations as proposed or as amended? If you change the zoning, you have to adopt some district regulations. But you, you have the ability to recommend approval, approval with modification. If you recommend denial, then you have to deny the zone change.
Right. What's the district recommendation?
So the code regulations, the, the development code that's been...
It's already there, okay, okay. Okay. And so, I understand.
So I, I'm gonna take a chance to tell you the facts. I grew up on a truck farm, six acres. This is incredible, small, it's an industrial farm. It's farmed with rural television, maybe a single small tractor. It was in the residential area. It was well-accepted. Produce was sold out at the residential area, at the, at the shop, as we called it, on the truck farm. So I come from the background, I kinda like the idea behind truck farms. I like the idea behind the small farms. I like the idea behind having that community involvement. We, we were an asset to the neighbors, we were an asset to, to the community, as well as sometimes our town people were from, and buy produce from us. And, and it fit well in the community. I, I don't recall the complaints that I see here. I do, I do recognize, and the one I have written down is the noise pollution, and I get that. I sit at my patio, and my neighbor's air conditioner's going right next to my ear. I don't know if that noise pollution is any better or any worse than the noise pollution of the refrigeration units there. You're, you've got some distance, I don't, I'm probably ten feet from his air conditioner. And on the other side, I'm about thirty feet from my air conditioner. So, so noise pollution, I do, I do have a concern with. The rest of the stuff there, I think we can come to a way to make it work, where you can have the community farm continue to operate with the neighbors in, I'm going to say, just in agreement that it can operate that way. And that might be, and Jim Frank has asked us as commissioners to look at, do we wanna accept shipping containers for his, for the storage of items on property with the standards that he put in here for barriers? And commissioners, we gotta make that decision, because I think that's one of the keys here. Or do we want to not allow the shipping containers, which will require a building? I know people have a struggle with the building and quote the threats that it'll be taller. Once you get to a building, you have, you have roof pitches and everything else you have to deal with, which they, they will end up for the same size storage area, you're gonna have a bigger building. I'm sorry, that's just the way building standards are, shipping containers. By their design, they're structurally fine with a flat roof. So, so I'm not sure that, you know, that it's wrong to go, and I think it's our choice to make on whether we want shipping containers in our community. I know, I know the thought is that they're at other places. I also recognize that shipping containers have a fairly strong type of container to prevent them from often valuable items, you know. And so, I think when we, when we look at what we need to do here today, I'm not interested in rewriting Greenstone's proposal. You, you guys may be, and I, obviously, we are all commissioners up here that can make that decision, but I'm not interested in trying to rewrite this thing. That's going to take us forever and a day to figure out how to rewrite it, and I don't think it's our responsibility to do that. Maybe it is, maybe we'll get to that in, in the long run. And if you guys wanna, wanna do that, we gotta get very clear what we want in there. And we have to get it in writing tonight in the, in the proposal. And then we have to hold on, on whether we accept it as it is, or we accept it with modifications. Because remember, that's what we're doing. We are accepting it as is, accepting it with modifications, or we're not accepting it. And, and that's, we gotta make those, those three, we gotta go somewhere with those three. Then we do the modifications, we gotta be able to write those modifications down and understand what they are, and make them succinct in here that, that we can all agree on. We can't have front, we gotta be specific. So, so I think one of the things we haven't heard yet is any motion to do anything with this thing. We, we need to have a motion to get there so that we can move on with what do we wanna do with the proposal in front of us in the code? And, and go down that path. Does that make sense?
It does. And would it be possible, let's just say hypothetically, we say, no, we're not gonna, uh, pretty this. Can we ask Greenstone to come back with a revised proposal with respect to what's in that?
No, I, right now, what we're here to do is to accept it as it is. Hold on, hold on, we, we have to either, because we have to move this on tonight. That's where we, we have to go with it, we have to move it on. It doesn't go back to a workshop for Greenstone to, to go, go do anything with it. It either, it either goes with our recommendation to accept it as written so that the council can, can make determinations with it, or with modifications so the council can make determinations, or we can tell the council that we don't agree with it, and as a recommendation, and they can make their determination. So that's what we get to do tonight. Am I, am I right? Yeah, yeah, you are, you're spot on. One other point that I'd like to make is that we, as part of the deliberation...
Yeah, yeah, you are, you're spot on. One other point that I'd like to make is that we, as part of the deliberations, we have to really address conclusions. I don't think we can address conclusions, however, until we have a motion on the floor, because, because the, the breadth of what that motion could be is going to help you answer some of those questions.
I make a motion to approve the reserving with modifications. I would welcome other members to add what they think modification should be. But I would say to either modify it by moving the storage containers to part of the undeveloped property, or by enhancing the screening to buffer the noise pollution that is coming to the area of the homeowners that live in that area. Because that appears to be the only thing that is currently not permitted. Would you, would you like to add any modifications? I heard some earlier.
So, so there's a motion on the floor. We don't, you can have a second or not, I don't, or we can have further discussion.
A second would only give us a discussion, or do we have to have a discussion?
Yes, for discussion purposes. Okay, you can have a second, if you don't agree to, you don't, it's all right.
We have to have a second to discuss.
I understand, okay. So you, you second it. Okay, all in favor of a motion on the floor to approve this with modification?
My second is for discussion.
Right.
A second is not for approval, it's just for discussion.
But that's what we're doing already. That is a motion.
Whenever there's a motion, there must be a second, or no second. But if there is a second, it allows us to discuss whether we approve it.
To discuss the specific motion.
Yeah. What's? The motion of being approved with modification.
The motion is to approve it, okay.
Right, and then we can have discussion once we, so, so on, on the floor right now is a motion and a second to approve this with modification, and then during our discussion, we'll figure out the modification in the order. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
No, we're not in favor of the motion.
Oh, we're not, we're just doing a discussion. Okay, we can just discuss. Okay, you're right. So now we have to go record what we want for modifications very distinctly.
Not unless this is passed. Well, actually, we're ignoring Robert's rules of order. Until this motion is passed, there is no discussion.
Firstly, someone makes a majority. First, someone makes a motion. Second, if it is not seconded, that motion moves nowhere.
Correct.
If it is seconded.
Then it must be voted on.
No, if it is seconded, if it is seconded, you must have discussion. You can still vote the motion down when the call for the motion to be answered.
Once we get it all written down, then we'll have a, a vote on the motion to approve the modification, once we have that modification written out. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay, okay. So now, the modifications of, I think Beijing said was
I wrote down, I'm gonna move the storage containers for enhanced buffering.
Is that?
Move the storage containers to part of the undeveloped property, uh, for, and/or increase the buffer, sound buffer. May I make a point, though? You know, you're being very, you're, you're making, you're being very specific about the, the community on the property. The proposal allows for storage containers on all of the competitors' RDO zoned properties, and so that's.
And I don't think we want in here to say to move, we have to put criteria for storage containers. And, and right now, there's criteria for the storage containers in the proposal, that are six-foot and the eight-foot evergreen buffers, right? So, so we gotta remember that that's, that's already in there. You know, you say enhance that, you want ten-foot? You gotta, you gotta be specific on what we want to change. We can't, we're not gonna go down the ground of just move the containers to undeveloped property.
The motion, I will, I will clear the motion. Thank you, Lisa. The motion is to approve the zoning, the, the change in zoning, and with modifications. So I'm not being specific of those modifications, because we're gonna open it up for discussion, and then we'll all say what those are, what we would like to see modified.
So I'm gonna go through with what's been presented, though. I'm gonna say, are we, is, is anything in the motion, or anything in the proposal here with shipping containers, commissioners, do you want that part of the proposal? Or do you want to delete shipping containers from the proposal? Uh, I would. Is that what I think, or do we want to change the buffering requirements that are already proposed and put in, in here?
I would propose that shipping containers are, uh, not considered permanent structures, which is the way the code is now. So, shipping containers are not, not permanent structure, meaning they have to be permitted, are moved. Correct, Lisa?
Right, yes.
Right, and right now, the code.
And who decides to permit or not permit?
So, so this is how it works right now. They're not allowed as an accessory structure, they're not allowed as a primary structure.
Right.
They're, they are allowed as a, uh, to a temporary use permit for specific purposes, those purposes being for, um, a construction office or storage. And so, and the code says that, that they are permissible for a period of one year, that, and it, and that they cannot be extended except under special circumstances as approved by the director.
At least the director, they would approve that. Okay, so I think we can just leave the existing, uh, rules as they are, which means then those storage containers have to go.
So, so.
Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, so, so, so what you're saying is, what, what, the way to, to incorporate that in is to strike the language regarding the storage containers as a, as a, as a primary use.
Yeah, describe that.
Now, now, we don't need to vote, but is that what we're looking to do? Is that one of the things we think is a good thing to do here? Is to, to rid ourselves of storage containers?
Well, we should note that the app did inform us, and we have our staff to let us know that they would put on the structure.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
So I just want to clear.
Right, right. That's why I say, if, if, because we, we're gonna have to start amending this thing to, to, to get it through tonight. And so we're gonna have to start it, but I don't want to go do a bunch of amendments if we don't have a consensus. We want at least do that.
So, so the last
recommendation, delete storage containers? That's what, that's what we're asking. We're asking as commissioners, are you guys interested in deleting?
Just showing how you would accomplish whatever.
That's what I'm recommending, effectively eliminate the storage containers, and the way you do it is you strike this modification that says storage containers would be considered the
A, a primary.
Primary use.
I agree with that.
Yeah, we all from that degree, but I just want to make sure that's what we go through and, and, and do that modification. Any other modifications that are concerning you guys on, on what's proposed here, on the proposal? None, I'm with.
Well, I can, uh, I can tell you, I'm not in favor of changing this zoning with any modifications. I don't think the zoning is necessary. Uh, I think there's more to this than we have been told, and I'm very concerned about that. I'm worried that we're writing another blank check like we did the last time we changed zoning. And it concerns me no small amount as to what else might be going on that we have not been informed about. So I'm not in favor of the zoning change under any circumstances.
Okay. So, right now, we have, uh, a, a motion that says we're gonna approve it with modification. And we're working on that to, to get to the end. Is there any other modifications we want to make to that?
You know.
And I understand what you're saying, don't, don't get me wrong, because we, we'll handle that in the voting of the motion on the table.
And I, I, we'll, we'll talk about what Joe was suggesting, which, uh, that, that's kind of where I'm at as well, because the types of modifications that, that I articulated, you're putting me, or you're putting the planning commissioner in the position of being a damn developer, and that's not our job. I mean, really, it's not. And, uh, you know, if, if somebody was going to annoy us as being in charge of developing this open area, I articulate how it should be done, in my view, but, you know, I think that's probably up to somebody else rather than this commission to do that. So I think for us to try to articulate all these conditions that I put on the piece of paper, I don't think there's a way to go.
Okay. Can you flip the motion on the table again? Modifications, any modifications, I guess, that we, that anybody wants to add?
Are the commissioners interested in rolling back the matrix to more of a community farm?
That's not on our table. We, we unless, unless the proposal matrix, it definitely, I thought you meant, when you said existing, I thought you meant today, the RDO, RD, whatever.
Yeah, the matrix that was proposed, that is proposed, that's part of the package.
Okay.
Includes farm stand, includes market garden, and includes the description of the market garden. My suggestion is, we want, if you want to keep this as a community garden, whether it's residentially zoned, or it's open space zoned, preferably open space zoned, you want to delete those.
Okay, I, just so you know, the farm stand is not, is a limited use already. So we're not, we're, we're, we would have to tell them that limited use isn't allowed, and it wouldn't be allowed in, um,
And that's not.
And that's not in the proposal, so we have to say it's not, I'm not sure how to do it. It's, it's already allowed.
As a limited use.
As a limited use, and, and, and the community garden is permitted, and agricultural actively fund is, is limited use too. And so, if you.
What's not, what's not.
It's not part of the proposal, though.
What's not permitted right now is agricultural product crafts sales being, that's not permitted in yard yard.
Just in the RDM, it is.
It is, it is permitted in the RDM, but not in yard yards. So that's, and that was one of the things that I noted was, was.
Okay, is that part of the, well, that's part of the zone change, that it be allowed in all the zones.
But in the RDM zone, also, that's the commercial area.
Right, yeah.
So thus the difference.
So, so I'm not sure, can we do what he wants to do, or is he, takes out the farm stand, and it's already a, something?
I don't, so, so is.
It's not part of the proposal.
If you're creating an RDO zone, you could, you could change it to limited or not permitted. But right now, it's a limited use in the current zone, but it would be, um, if you change that P to L.
Okay, so, so you want to change the, that permitted for the farm stand to an M?
I'm suggesting that for the matrix, you delete farm stand.
I, I can't delete it, it's already there.
It's, it's there as a, as a permitted use to the R district, correct?
As, as.
When you say delete it, I can change the permitted to a, to a not permitted or to a limited.
That's fine.
So what do you, what was your proposal, to change it? An M, okay.
And then, there's reference to a market garden, there's also a matrix, like that, and, this was my work, I'm here.
Okay, are there any other modifications to the, to what's on the table, which is approve it with modifications?
And repeat what those modifications are? So this is what I have right now. So, um, the modifications are, one, to strike the provisions for temporary storage as only use, and then the, as a primary use, and then the standards also don't make any sense any longer, right? And then, number two, in the zoning matrix, to make a farm stand a not, a farm stand not a permitted use in the ozone, and market garden not a permitted use in the ozone, correct?
Okay, that's it for modifications. So any more discussion?
Sure, go ahead. If you, if you recognize that the existing containers are really the major rock with respect to public's comments and concerns, the noise, the presence, the view of obstruction. You've already said, no containers are out. We have, no containers on property right now. They have filed an appeal, correct?
They have filed an appeal for the notice of violation.
And what is the status of that?
Um, there is a hearing before the hearing examiner on Tuesday, once he, once she makes her written recommendation, it will go to, to, to a hearing before city council. Now, the question is whether or the, the, the appeal is on my interpretation of the code. Code is black and white on this. So, um, so it, it's, they're two separate issues. What Mr. Frank has said is that it is his intent to stay the enforcement on the storage containers until this process can determine whether or not they're going to be permitted. And that if the decision is to not permit them either in the zone, or to not approve the, the changes to the zone, uh, that he will have to leave, because he has made that statement directly.
How do we in this process create a timeframe?
We don't. That's not our job. That's not our job.
It's not, so the, the.
You're asking for enforcement, we're not enforcing those.
Right, exactly.
We're doing condition enforcement.
No, 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 it is, right now, they're, right now, he's in violation. And he's going to have to, he's, and what he's trying to do is stay the enforcement. The way the code reads, if there's an appeal of the notice of violation, then, um, I have to stay enforcement until that appeal has been heard. And so that's where we are right now. The outcome of that is not going to change, is not going to change. What you do here is not going to change the outcome of that. If, if it's, if, if my, uh, interpretation is a foul, they'll be, and, um, so that, your only job in this is to determine whether or not these changes to the zoning and the standard proposed for this, for this district are, should or should not be recommended for approval to city council, or approval with modification, or denied. That's, that's the scope of your, your actions tonight.
All right, taking its face value, as Mr. Frank said this evening, with regard to the containers, he said that if containers go, then you'll build something else.
Yes, and, and, and we've heard testimony from a number of people. Yes, and and the and we've heard testimony from a number of people that would be satisfied if they built a facility that was akin to what they've done with that farm, with the with the farm storage building. Because it because it's a very aesthetically pleasing design.
I I don't, I have no problem with it, so sorry, that's fine, I would rather that in the containers.
And that's what's on the proposal, so we can, right now, that's where it's at.
Yes.
They would have to build a building, they'd have to remove the containers and go building if we if this code, if this proposal with our modification goes through.
Yes, if the if you, if the if the motion that's been recommended, if if you refer this recommendation, the hearing examiner agrees, if city council agrees, ultimately, it's a city's own decision.
Right.
Okay, so.
He'll build another, he'll build another structure.
Yeah.
On this property, it's a part of this operation.
He, well, I would just say he may or may not, that would be his choice.
He has choice.
His choice.
Part of the issue we're dealing with is probably unhappiness with respect to the presence, the noise.
And so he's made the modification to remove them, so now.
So how do we then, the next, in my mind, the next logical step, is what do you put in this document that prevents us from coming back and having the same discussion two years from now?
That's code enforcement, there'll be code enforcement, I don't deal with code enforcement either. We 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 make sure the code is well.
You make recommendations.
Those standards, you don't see the need for standards here, height limitation.
Okay, but that that's, those are modifications that you absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm suggesting, what can we do?
So you're asking for more, so we want to go into building standards for a permit structure in a R E O in the River District building.
And let me just say, let me just say, just to give you a context right now. So in the city development code, in the residential zone, the building height is thirty-five feet, however, accessory structures are limited to twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five?
Yes, and the River District residential structures can be forty-five feet.
It just is what it is, I wasn't here when it was a doctor. No, I'm just giving.
With reference standard.
Right, I'm just sharing with you what the standards are as a context, if you're going to put a limitation on building height in this zone, I wanted to give you a context for what is also permitted, that's all.
Could you repeat what the setbacks?
So it wasn't a, it comments about setbacks, it was a comment regarding on, it was a comment regarding uh building height. So in the in the River District, residential building height is forty-five feet, I believe accessory structures are still twenty-five feet.
But yeah, you have setbacks, Chris?
Yeah.
So so that that's how.
I think, Lisa, you said earlier that uh for open space in the city of River Lake proper, building height was twenty-five feet, does that ring a bell?
Yes, for yes, for the for accessory structures.
Okay, okay.
So you could you could restrict the height of these accessory structures to fifteen feet. And you could require the locating of the structures on a site plan, who by the same.
Yes, but it's only going to be good if you also have setbacks, because right now the setback, there is a there is a zero side yard setback and a zero rear yard setback. Um so you, in the in the River District, because it because you can use your lot line for residential development. Um so you may want to consider in the R E O zone, you may want to consider a setback from a residential zone um to create some buffering, which is not what's happening right now.
I thought I read that you was proposing a ten-foot setback.
Yes, no, he did propose, he did propose that, which is the increase over what is in the code today.
That's right.
Do you want, or want that modifications, additional modifications?
Wow.
Anybody?
Well, my my view is if we're going to approve the open, then uh we go and prove the storage containers, and we can leave his setbacks.
Right.
As they are.
I doubt you might be too, I I prefer them, like. So so one thing we have to then, then, is part of our conclusions and our criteria for approval, is we kind of got to go through the process, which is the is it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the general public welfare? Is it warranted by change in economic, technological, or range conditions? Are we here to correct an error, is that, there's six items we've got to go through. Is it necessary to clarify meeting or intent, and we have to go through these, and the only way we should be able to forward this on even with them and so on is if any of those six criteria are positive, I say that, when I say positive, is if it's not con- not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we, that, if they were all not consistent with what we have, then we can't, we would have to vote no on this.
And I would make the.
Or at least that's what the council has to say.
Right, we don't.
Right.
The council has.
So in your deliberations, um you should be deliberating on what is in the motion, um so what's proposed in the motion. And by the way, I just looked it up, it is twenty, there is a twenty-five foot height limit in the R E O zone in in.
So so in our criteria for approval is with what's on the on the table right now, is the motion to approve it with the modifications. The modifications include the removal of the allowance for shipping container structures. And there's two areas on the farm stand and the market garden where where we would put not permitted. That's what's on the table right now, and that's the modifications that we put in.
Now make a suggestive revision.
Okay.
His area that he's working on is approximately fifty feet wide from the fence in the residential area to the to the with the alignment of the power lines, I think it's fifty feet. If you put in a fifteen-foot setback, which is, you know, a reasonable residential setback, rear setback, and a building height of fifty feet maximum, then you might help those folks with the business that they have from their backyard.
This for consideration. I I'm open to make modifications, we have to.
But if you're moving the container and he's adding the buffers irrespective of what they have now, he said on tape on record that he's willing to remove that setback, then um.
I'm not sure he said he's willing to remove the setback. I'm willing to go from containers to something else.
I thought he said something about.
No, he he did already move setbacks, he 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 did already extend setbacks.
To ten.
To ten, to be able to leave, so, from I believe five foot.
Five foot, five foot, there could be separation, but it's a zero lot.
Yeah.
But a modification, would he still be allowed to add that visual buffer of trees along the fencing, even though moving the containing containment structure? So the way this is, the way it's worded right now, with the revisions that are being discussed, you move the storage containers, there's nothing that would tie her from to to the buffering.
The the buffering is tied to the metal storage containers. To containers, I'm sorry.
And uh just one other observation is that at some point, all of this would be turned over to a homeowners association that would be comprised of homeowners?
It's, it it actually, is actually owned by the homeowners.
Right.
The homeowners association, they they now have um uh members or or own owners on the board of directors for the HOA. But um my understanding is that Greystone still has um a majority vote right now, but that's going to shift.
Yeah, at what point, do we have any idea, what point in time it would shift from majority Greystone to majority homeowners?
I don't have that many.
You know, we're getting sixty percent.
We already is.
We have three of five.
And enjoy.
Greystone no longer in that, and and Mr. Frank told us that, that they no longer hold the majority. So just so you guys know, the the what's in, what's in right now in the proposal for the open space is a twenty-foot setback from sidewalks, fifteen from public pathway, and all other setbacks are ten-foot. Just so you 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 know what it's written here, in case.
So my proposal for a fifteen-foot setback and fifteen-foot maximum building height, is that something we can agree to?
Sure, we can do whatever modification we want here.
I think you need.
We would cry some of the commissioners.
Well, we need to, we need to, uh would you like me to um reintroduce the motion to include that information that you're going forward as part of the motion?
I'm I'm sorry, E G, I didn't get it, so just that.
So would we need to amend that motion to include?
No, no, we were just, our, we've already got it with modification, now we have to come up with a modification.
Okay, good.
So we can work on modifications.
So so I guess the question is, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, that's what I was first.
So fifteen-foot building height?
Fifteen-foot maximum building height, and a fifteen-foot setback.
For a permanent building. A fifteen-foot permanent building.
Yes. So you 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 do realize a fifteen-foot tall building will totally obliterate these people's view. If it's moved, if it's moved fifteen feet into the property, you'd probably be better off than you are now looking at a container. But you've got an eight-foot tall uh storage unit in there now, you're proposing a fifteen-foot tall building, this price is tall. So I don't see how that's benefiting any of these neighbors. Well, I was just going back to what Lisa was talking about, the actual maximum building height in the is twenty, in the R O D is twenty-five to twenty-two feet.
Is proposed twenty-five feet.
Proposing here is a is a compromise.
One on ten.
So so.
Eight.
Uh seriously, I say eight feet now, why not? I I I'm really trying, I get where you're going, I understand what you're trying to get to. Um but um I'm just concerned about it's going to make it worse.
So so what's one of the things as the planning commission, we can't be writing code that makes it impossible for someone to read.
Agreed.
So you can't go make an eight-foot building height and say that's acceptable. We can't do that as a planning mission, that's not, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to both try to bring the folks that are the public that have to look at these buildings and say, I can accept that, as well as the people that develop our properties around here, and give them a fair chance to be able to do something correct. And giving a building height of eight feet does not provide that to a a developer or anybody else in in here to say we're being fair with our, we we might as well just say no buildings are allowed, because that's what you're saying.
But no, but what I'm saying is these are buildings that are just going to be used to clean vegetables, as I understand it. Is that my.
I I'm telling you, a fifteen-foot building height, there's nowhere in the world that you're going to put people in a fifteen-foot building height and do work. You can't do that, it's, or a ten, uh eight-foot building height.
They're working in it now.
So, well, I think it's, I think the, I think Greystone will tell you it's about a nine-foot height. Is what I believe they they are saying it is.
Nine and a half.
Okay, nine and a half, I I I know it wasn't eight. Right now, in the code where they've got it, is is the sheds or the small buildings, less than two hundred square foot wood frames are fifteen-foot height allowed right now, that's what he's written in here, and then uh permit W T has done, where you follow the code of the of the River District Chapter Three, which is probably the twenty-five foot or thirty-five or forty.
Well, it's forty-five feet.
Yeah.
Right, and for maybe we'll go need twenty-five feet.
So so we would have to, we would have to change that additional designing standards to a standard that is reasonable for all parties. That's where I'm saying, an eight-foot standard is not reasonable for all parties. We put it in there, but uh it doesn't make sense to be unreasonable. If we if we really want to approve this and move forward with something that has a modification that sounds, that makes sense, then we should make it, correct?
You know what's, what interesting fact, I mean, you're saying that the homeowners actually have control of the HOA? Then why aren't the, I'm just questioning, why aren't the homeowners uh expressing their concerns in the HOA, meaning with respect to these activities?
We do. We don't have.
Do you hold on it, I mean?
So that's, I'm I'm sorry, we are against the clock, I need to work on this, I don't care about that. The homeowner is not a problem.
Gotcha, and I would recommend, well, are we going to build on the these proposals?
So so we need to, if we want to put a building height in there, it's got to be a reasonable building height, that's all I'm telling you.
Gotcha.
It's not going to be an eight-foot.
And right now it's twenty-five in most regulations.
Gotcha.
So what, I mean, what what do you think a reasonable height for a farm shed would be?
Twelve feet.
Frankly, I don't care, because I'm not going to vote for it in any, so I don't care.
I'm okay with the way, let it be with what the building standard is, if it's going to be, that's what we've said is okay already in our neighborhood, neighborhood, so then that fits with what what's been around over there. Because right now, no change to anything, it, the the owner of that land can put a structure on there that meets current code.
There could be two stories.
Only if it was a primary use, and um if all these uses in this community.
Microforests.
Have been identified as accessory, these are all accessories that the primary use is the community farm, all of the structures are accessory to that.
And the zoning, however, people build a two-story residence.
Well, only only if the homeowners association voted to do so, it's owned by the homeowners association.
Again, we're hitting out in the world of not part of our, what we're trying to task, to accomplish with our tasks tonight, so. I'm just, I'm just trying to keep us real into where we need to be. Any building height restrictions need to be added? So going through, trying to get through here once. Right now, we have the two items being not allowed, which is the farm store and, oh, gosh, the market. And then uh then not allowing the extension department allows the shipping containers and storage units on the properties.
And by definition, when we strike that, there is that that primary user also strikes this enter to society.
That's correct, the whole, the whole paragraph.
I'm sorry, what, so one more time, so if if you're going to, and and I just want to be clear that if you're striking the uh portion that allows shipping containers as a as a primary use, then by definition, you're also striking the standards associated, the design standards associated there were.
So what you have is is right now, that proper screening for the metal containers, there's a, there's a list of standards they they have written out here, which are, in that case, a structure can't be higher than ten feet shipping container height, uh no closer than fifty feet to the roadway, and and then the the screening requirements of sixty or eight feet, depending on which view you're looking from, those all go away.
Correct.
Okay.
And then Charlie, Charlie also brought up the fifteen-foot setback, and I don't think that there was a decision one way or another on that.
Okay.
So we have to take votes on each one of those, don't we?
No, we don't, we just write it, and then at the end, we'll vote on whether we approve it or not. No, we don't, we just write it and then at the end we'll vote on whether we approve it or not approve it.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay.
As written with the modification. I'm not interested in in changing the setback, I think the ten-foot setback is satisfactory to me, but if we're interested in it, okay. So where we look read this, is this proposal, the amendment, is it consistent with our comprehensive plan? And is it not detrimental to public welfare?
And I want to make a point that if when you're when you're voting on this, you're voting on it with the with the amendments that you're recommending.
Right, right, as amended. And and I would say we are consistent with the con plan, and I believe it's not detrimental to public welfare. Is it warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions? I don't believe so. And I I believe it is not. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error, I don't believe there's any errors that we're trying to correct for this. The proposed amendment is not necessary to clarify mean or intent now, or is necessary. I truly believe the way he's written it out, it does provide clarity to what he, what they want to do with that space, that open space, because it doesn't, as as Mr. Frank said, it doesn't fit very well into residential or or mixed use, to be true. The proposed amendment. Sorry, I'm repeating ahead of myself. Uh, is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed? It is, he's asking for some additional allowances on on open space. The proposed amendment, is it necessary to be in the public interest? Say it's not, but I I would say is not, not in the public interest. Okay, I mean, so out of this, we are saying that three of the six. Uh, well, it either way, this amendment, for the city council to to approve this amendment, they could, they can apply the same criteria, and they and they have enough to say yes, if it's any of the following are met. Just wanted to let you guys know that. So now, we have our proposal on the table, we know our our three modifications. Right, does everybody know those? Does Lisa need to repeat any of those? Okay, with the proposal and the second, I'd like to get a roll call vote on agreement to the uh, or not agreement to the uh the motion as amended, or the motion with the proposal as amended. Okay? So let's do that by roll call, just so I can have to.
Okay, Richard Steiler?
I I do not agree with the the motion as it says it is written.
Joe Mann?
Nate.
DG?
Aye.
Jim Bonker?
No.
Charles James?
No.
So with that, we, that only puts us into Neverland again.
Yeah.
So I need another motion on the floor.
Okay, I'll I'll make another motion. To amend to eliminate the storage containers, everything else is as is.
One second. We need discussion.
Can I just clarify, when you say eliminating the storage containers, you're also eliminating the standards associated there, right?
So direct.
What did you say, Sir? I I just clarified that that when he said eliminating the storage containers, he's also eliminating the standards associated there with.
Yeah.
Okay, again, let's do a roll call vote.
Hey, Richard Steiler?
I agree with this, that's what I'm doing tonight.
Joe Mann?
Nate.
DG Garcia?
I agree. Aye.
Jim Bonker?
Aye.
Charles James?
Aye.
So the motion passes. So what we will do with this is it will go on, we're we're making a recommendation to the city council to agree with the proposal as written, with the amendments of not allowing shipping containers and storage units uh, on the on the properties, on open space properties. Okay?
So now, um, we have five other hearings, sorry, we have five other hearings scheduled for this evening. Um, this was the one that had a time-sensitive nature, because we have to get you to adopt the you have to approve some ratified financing conclusions in time for the commission of under thirty years' period. And I have to have my stack for the logs, so I need to do this. So that was why this is so time-sensitive. Uh, the rest of them, you can continue the hearing to date definite. There is no reason why we couldn't uh continue that hearing until the next uh planning commission meeting, which is scheduled for November.
The next is October ten.
I mean, it's October, uh, here.
October eleven.
October eleven, yes. Yes. But what we need to motion is that.
I think the motion that we kind of combined to adjourn and cover these other issues at the next.
Continue the hearing to the to date specified.
Continue the meeting to the date specified.
Which is the eleventh of October, go back now.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who was the second on that? Who seconded that motion?
Richard did.
Oh, yeah. You seconded it.
But it it, guys, this is a tough one for us, this is a tough one to get through, because it's it's not ours to write, it's not ours to send back to to staff or anything like that, it's it's a proposal from from somebody else, so thank you, thank you for your involvement. Anyways, thank you for your involvement, thank you guys for all your input. I'm sorry if I get short, but we do have to move through this stuff, so, okay?
You guys did great, you you guys were troopers, uh, the 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 next five are going to be a lot easier.
Yes. So order that, so it starts talking about their backgrounds. I'm telling you about my background.
Signs, I'll take them down in the background.
Because order my background, that's a typical USA stunt.
Move two different things, it's a motion, but.
There you go.
Well, we cleared out the comments of what they walked in, move that stand and adjourn.
There you go.
I think.
There, do that, awesome.
Thank you.
Happy, happy birthday.
I'm sorry, I forgot you're dead on your birthday.